Our public.
Sorry.
Welcome to our public hearing tonight on the zoning ordinance, designing map and amendment of Saldo. And with that, I will, there will be a chance for people to speak later in this meeting. We'll free turn it over to our solicitor to start here.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Now is the time and place that has been advertised for the public hearing for the discussion of the adoption of an amended zoning ordinance, an amended zoning map and an amended subdivision and land development ordinance. All members of the public are welcome to comment. We will begin with comments from Michael Baker, which is Hannah. She will begin her initial comments to make some of the generalizations as to what's been done. After that, everybody will have five minutes who has signed up to speak if they wish to speak. You can speak on behalf or against, but you are welcome to make those comments. Mr. Hart will be scheduling, we'll be watching the time for five minutes. Additional questions can be asked as a follow-up of each individual witness if they're provided. Mr. President, that is, we are prepared.
Okay. So just to go on record here, all council members present, Councilman Wavenburg is present by Zoom. But he is here also, so all seven of us are here. So you're going to go into your presentation.
Okay, Hannah, do you want to?
Good evening. My name is Hannah Clark. I am manager for Michael Baker for the Zoning Ordinance, Zoning Map Update. Um, my understanding is she had shared the presentation. That shared, or do you want?
Uh, I did share with council the facts, fact statement, but I think probably for the record for this meeting, they're probably going to want you to at least break through.
Okay. Um, so we are presenting tonight the zoning ordinance update, the zoning map. Um, and Saldo and the official map. So in terms of, I'll start with the zoning ordinance, this is a full rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Um, we'll see when you have gone through the documents as well as summarize some that we have condensed a lot of the sections into what we feel and what we worked on with the Borough, the task force and others, as well as the planning commission hearings, more concise, more straightforward, and ultimately accessible and usable zoning ordinance. So we have completely updated all the zoning districts, um, those and I will, so the zoning districts that are reflected, and please happy to answer any specific questions as we come up. Um, I know it's a very dense document, so I'm happy to answer questions. Um, so the zoning districts, the proposed new zoning districts, I will list them from what we consider extents to most extents. Um, and how that reflects in the borough. So we have the preservation zoning district, which is currently borough and county-owned lands. It is not intended to be built upon or used for anything other than recreation, walking trails, things mostly whatever exists. Um, the next zoning district, um, it's the conservation zoning district that is mainly what has reflected in the area where South Mountain is as well as um, along, you have the Klein's Lane area. This is intended, it's a strictly residential district, intended to serve the resources that are there in the sense that building is not flexible, whether placed on the site if there's a space or there's some just um, it is a relatively low density area. Um, the next area, just again, to quickly give an overview, it's wooden residential. This is the area mainly single-family around the high school or north of the high school. Again, these lots because of their somewhat irregular spatial photography are also have to flexibly have flexibility in terms of setback. Um, you can go to the enclave residential, which is the area south, um, near community parks, south of Chatham Street. Again, this area is envisioned, single-family, um, and it also is intended to basically stay the density average at the especially because of the access points into the enclave residential area. And then the central residential is the end portion, part of the borough. That is, again, we're getting smaller lots, but we're also something just have seen the zoning ordinance is introduction of what we call form-based code when it comes to the districts, setbacks and storm, massing and bulk. So we are looking for consistency and to obtain the type of residential that's in that area. So I just went through the residential districts. Are there any questions? Um.
No, uh, just to let everybody, just so everybody's aware, all of the maps and the zoning ordinance in the Saldo, the proposed or the amended versions are all available online. So if you want to look at them as we go, they are readily available on the Borough website.
Well, then just quickly describe that speaking on the mixed-use districts. Um, so we have the urban core district, which are street and Chatham Street areas are, um, more the highway commercial, that's what currently is a highway commercial, the areas that are around, um, where the more auto-oriented businesses are, current tour dealerships, shopping centers. This area is envisioned to, again, still accommodate auto-oriented businesses, but also consider potentially a residential next to at the central areas for additional events. The next area is the urban core neighborhood. Urban core neighborhood is the area, as we get closer to the triangle, closer to downtown, um, the lots are becoming smaller, um, there's more both single-family, multi-family housing duplexes, triplexes. Um, thank you so much. Sorry. So I'm currently talking about the, um.
Hold on just a Right.
Thank you. Um, the, so the urban core neighborhood, it is the bright blue, robinet blue, I would call it here on the map. Um, and this, again, we are envisioning what we call gentle density. So right now you really see a mix of single-family duplexes, some apartment, the rise apartments, some, um, triplexes or quadplexes. We wanted maybe to see that in this area. Well, then the, um, urban edge neighborhood, which is the lightest blue on the map. This is mainly where there are garden-style apartments and multifamily complexes in AMAS. It's not envisioned to change dramatically. Um, it is more, there will be, there's currently a permission of more flexible uses in all the mixed-use districts. You could have virtual or common office on the ground floor, the residential above. And then I'm going to take us to the two most dense mixed-use districts. We have the bright red, which is the area around the triangle, the downtown core. This is where you will see if you're looking at zoning ordinance, looking at um, massing, invoking and height standards, we are proposing potentially higher, um, buildings in this area, going to five stories or six stories with setback. Um, we again want to build on the vibrancy and, um, the all the great amenities of the triangle while also earth, um, seeing it as a place to live and grow the walkability and vibrancy. The main is downtown. The final residential area is the light pink, first we mixed-use area is light pink downtown neighborhood. This area is slightly lower heights than downtown core, but again, really, um, looking for that since interactive ground floor spaces such as office, commercial, tail with potentially residential above. Finally, we have the dark purple, the enterprise district. It is industrial district. It is envisioned to stay as the place for heavier manufacturing, production, um, for those heavier uses that currently exist there and will continue to. It also could be possible for some of the newer visions for this area, such as the bigger space and some, um, community kitchens, other, um, uses that we know are being envisioned. So those are new districts. Um, happy to get any questions as I've announced.
Does anyone, does anyone from council have any questions for this part? Does anyone from the audience have any questions for this part? Please step, please step up to the microphone, sir.
Maybe just to make it easier.
Please say, uh, before anybody comes to the mic room, please state your name and your address.
Uh, Richard Kiernan, I own small businesses. I live at thirty-nine, three nine five, three large, for a drive down.
Okay, thank you.
The map I have zoning district map, totally different. I forgot this one. Colors can solve.
The, the color schemes have changed.
The colors, the colors have changed, but the districts have remained similar. Um, this map that you see here is the one that was posted and advertised on the website.
Is this one accurate?
I, I, we can't tell you because we're not looking. Like, I can't tell you.
Can I just specific question here? Bridge, you have a question. So. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Clark regarding the map? Okay, uh, go ahead, Ms. Clark.
So, um, in terms of the districts, so zoning, um, I will just, again, as a quick overview, our envisioning exclusive when we think about the different zoning districts, the uses are envisioned for the residential districts. It is residential, the use of that's conservation district. Wooden residential, enclave residential and central residential are strictly residential districts, and that's mainly what they are today. When we go into the urban gateway, urban core neighborhood, the, um, other zoning districts that are mixed-use downtown core, downtown neighborhood, this is again where you're seeing the opportunities for both a mix of business retail at varying densities. So the use tables that were shared in the ordinance and in the overview presentation, um, provide the detailed, oh, um, details on what is permitted, what is special exception conditional use, um, and obviously I can answer any questions about that. I'll move, um, I think for just an overview of the zoning, is, is that sufficient? Or would you like me to continue on?
Uh, I would like you to provide an overview of the zoning ordinance changes so that people are aware.
So in terms of the changes from the current ordinance, test this was a complete rewrite. It is more or less a completely new ordinance. So in addition to the zoning districts that I mentioned, um, we have reviewed all the uses that are permitted in each zoning district. So you will see, again, you have the residential districts that permit varying densities of residential. So your wooden residential, your conservation, single-family is what is permitted. When we get into enclave residential, you do begin to see permission or permitted of duplexes and townhomes. And then going into the central residential, that is, again, where you're seeing slightly additional densities, um, again, single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, um, no larger multifamily buildings. So strictly residential districts are, um, aligning with the borough's, um, current residential districts. Overall, it's really about maintaining and enhancing the character of the residential districts of the borough. And in doing so, again, as you refer to the ordinance, the form-based sheets are a way to be able to fully understand and visualize what the standards are. So you again will see an overhaul of the form of enmassing setbacks, accessory buildings, the entirety of, um, what those regulations look like. Um, is, is that generally acceptable?
That's fine for the purposes of a public hearing. The public is presumed to have read the ordinance and will have specific questions afterwards. Do you want to go on to the non-commercial ones? Or do you, do you think it's, would you prefer questions now about the residential?
No, I think I can speak to the next two separate.
Well, let's do it this way. Does any of the, does anybody in the public have any questions for Ms. Clark regarding the usage in the proposed residential districts? Alright, seeing none, go ahead, Ms. Clark. You can move to the commercial ones.
So when we turn, uh, to the, the, uh, mixed-use districts, as I previously described, those are inclusive of the urban gateway, the urban edge neighborhood, urban core neighborhood. Um, those are our moderate density mixed-use districts. So and again, what we're seeing is we're going from the urban edge, which right now, as I described, is the um, area where there's mainly your garden apartments, um, various types of postings or residential. That is again, envisioned to continue to be permitted. If there were to be an opportunity to redevelop the site, potentially put in a building that had retail or commercial on the ground floor with residential above. We also, when we get into these mixed-use districts, you will also see that the setbacks from the street are smaller because we're trying to create, um, more walkable, human-oriented, best-earned scale areas. So even in areas that are more auto-oriented, such as the urban gateway, which is previously more or less the highly commercial, we are seeing ultimately redevelopment closer to the street so that people have a little more, um, of that sense of the downtown AMAS main street, and it's more inviting for both people who are walking as well as people who, um, are, uh, driving and hopefully getting them to slow down a bit if they, you know, feels a little less like a so, and I'm happy to speak to any of these slides. I'm sorry if it's out of order.
No, it, it's fine. It's actually more efficient to do it this way.
So mixed-use areas, as we continue, the urban core neighborhood, that is the areas, again, um, where we are seeing mainly residential right now, continuing to be mainly residential with opportunities to scale commercial. Um, again, some slight opportunities for what we call gentle density, opportunities to potentially see accessory dwelling unit. Um, especially in those areas that have alley access, such as the residential make up. So in the, um, urban, sorry, in the downtown neighborhood and downtown core, which actually it's going down. So downtown neighborhood, this is the area, if you recall, the lighter pinks surrounding the triangle. This is really encompassing quite a few different existing zoning districts in AMAS currently, and that's because there is a variety of forms and different uses in the areas surrounding the downtown. And this is again intended to allow for some growth, some density, but also maintain the overall character that is really valued and inherent to AMAS with that walkability, that, um, vibrancy. And then the downtown core, again, here we are seeing, this is the area where we're standing right now, we're sitting, um, the area around the triangle. Again, it's envisioned to build on what is here, so enhance existing commercial, existing residential in that area to allow for, again, some strategic growth, but also economic development and build on the core assets of AMAS, the walkability, the connectivity, and it really being a place that folks, you know, value, want to be and can get places. And I, I spoke to the enterprise district, uses here, uh, again, we're seeing the heavier industrial uses, not necessarily um, anything that's beyond what is existing in the industrial district now. Um, I should also just quickly mention when we talk about uses in the districts, because AMAS is part of a multi-municipal comprehensive plan. You have the ability to share uses between municipalities who are part of that multi-municipal plan. So you have, um, some of the uses, you know, because you warehousing this in some of the other places, don't see warehousing out here. So again, these are the use tables, as I was kind of giving the, um, very high-level overview. We are seeing, and we are in the strictly residential districts, mainly single-family, and getting to the mixed-use um, areas, we're seeing slightly more density, townhome, residential. Civic and institutional uses, these are generally permitted in places because typically by law, some, you know, certain things such as the cemetery or, um, different, uh, the public safety, those are generally. The, uh, open spaces, agricultural forestry, open space, and we're seeing all of these permit, or many of them permitted in their preservation area and conservation areas, which are really best suited. Then obviously things like parks, um, gardens and other smaller scale, those are permitted across many of the districts or all the districts. And our retail uses, so as we go through, um, different types of retail uses, we are seeing, um, I think kind of, um, but the retail uses, again, really seeing those, you're not going to see them in the residential. You're going to see them in the mixed-use, then it's really going to be, um, most of them are in this case, um, with the more auto-oriented, such as our dealerships or beer wine and liquor sales. Any of those are in the urban gateway as an example. The service uses, this is your, one of the biggest categories in terms of those neighborhood amenities, as well as some larger uses. And again, because the way this table is moving from these stems fairly residential into the mixed-use, are seeing much more permitted in the mixed-use areas, particularly again in the urban gateway, which is the district currently today, the highway commercial where you have a lot of these types of uses. Uh, the retail space and some of the larger lot as well. So infrastructure uses, these are, um, going through certain utilities. I do want to point out here because there's um, a big point of discussion in many communities that wireless communication facilities, um, small cell are permitted everywhere because that is state law. We municipalities do not necessarily have as much, um, purview to regulate. Industrial uses, so again, these are really seen only in that enterprise district, which is the industrial district, except for a commercial kitchen, which is also permitted in the downtown core. And then we get into, these are accessory uses, so there's secondary uses of, um, the property. Again, um, this, you know, if your primary use is residential, some of the residential districts, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, in that regard, the accessory dwelling unit or granny flat is committed in the conservation district, enclave residential, central residential, um, and the urban edge and urban core neighborhood. Um, we also addressed, uh, short-term rentals or Airbnb's in this area. Again, um, really trying to think where, based on the other uses or joint uses space, um, things would make the most. So happy to speak more specifically if anything.
Uh, may I suggest we let the audience ask questions about the accessory uses that could be? Does anyone have any questions regarding the accessory uses on this?
I'm Mark Kornak from two thirteen McCungia, and my question is probably nothing more than clerical. That the accessory uses and, uh, uses of the property itself, and the uses of the property, the tables didn't allow short-term access, except in a couple of areas.
That's correct.
And then when you look at accessory uses, it allows very, that's what I'm having a little trouble understanding, but is that, is that mean? Yeah, you can't have your house be garage. So like I said, it may be clerical. I don't know if that's what the tables look like.
Okay, so what, are you asking about the Airbnb with, with respect to where it can be done? Is that, that the question?
Yeah, um, mostly because it doesn't match. So where accessory uses goes right across the line is permissible. If you look at the same thing on the street, uh, houses, it's not say that it's only like two or three.
Hannah, can you take a look at the, it's because I see what he's asking. It says short-term rental is permitted in all districts. But my understanding is based on the reading of the actual ordinance. That's not correct.
And urban edge, urban core, urban gateway, downtown neighborhood.
Okay, I think you might be looking at the wrong one.
I think it's, I still think it's different. So I think if you looked at short-term rentals, when it talks of accessory use, then it is not the same as that.
Are you talking about the definition?
Right.
I, I would.
So there, there are two different, there's two different types of tables, like that is what you're asking about then for accessory uses is in a separate building.
Right, but why? So why would you, if you're not allowed to have your house, why would you allow it?
Well, the answer is because that's not a principal use.
So that's what I don't understand. I don't understand.
So if somebody could have a, in these, in these, in these urban areas, it would be a stand, like a standalone separate portion of the home that would be a permitting use. That is, that is what has been intended apparently.
So you can rent a room as an area.
Correct.
And that's what I was having a little trouble understanding.
Well, not, but it wouldn't be a room. It would be a separate structure. We're talking about an accessory structure.
So the garage.
Correct.
For a, an apartment. Um, and where that.
So then I follow that with the question, why would you do that if you were trying to keep it from turning into a bunch of party houses in this one area, you've been allowed to drive behind your house? Why would that be allowed? It seems like you should have a system allowance of the short-term rentals.
It's a valid question, and it's something now that you're bringing it to our attention. Uh, we actually, council, I don't know if you have opinions on that, but it's something, like I said, this is why we have the public hearings. As this was developed and brought to the public, that was raised. Does council have thoughts on this?
And I have to apologize for not having noticed this when I read it first time because I know.
Well, there's been, there's been multiple amendments and it, and that's the point, like the pub, that's what these public hearings are for, to allow people to review them, to see them. And like I said, it, you know, we may think something seemed valid at the time, and, you know, this went through zoning, planning, multiple iterations with, you know, Michael Baker, my firm has reviewed it. We don't make the judgment calls now, but council does. So how does council feel about this? Is this something you would like us to look at amending perhaps?
Yes, I, John, pull your mic. If I listen to this tonight, I'd be the permanent discussion.
Mark, I'm sorry. I, I missed your last name.
I'm sorry, it's P E R N A.
All right. Thank, thank you. And thank you for bringing that up.
Council, I'm going to use something to say.
I was saying that, yeah, so. I was saying that, yes, so.
Do, I mean, is this something we would like to essentially keep out of the urban core? Or those more mixed use areas and just allow it in, like, but what is the preference of council to move it towards? Those areas or to move it out to the more less residential? Yeah, more residential.
I, I'm pretty sure you don't want to be running out garages as Airbnbs, I don't, I don't know that that's your intention. I, I think you need to look at it over and holistically.
Okay, before. Let's make sure council's done with their discussion.
I just want to make sure that I understand, so in the one section where. Residential, the short term rental is allowed in the one screen.
By special exception when to into in the urban gateway and the red downtown core, that's correct, Mr. President.
So short term rental that.
Yeah, those are the Airbnbs, those items. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Just let her finish that.
Just because we, we just bounced, what is, these are principal uses, so. When we talk about short term rental in this particular regard, by special exception, it would be that.
Somebody doing it for their actual job, like they, the whole purpose of the home is a short term rent.
Or the apartment unit, when we look at it in terms of the accessory uses. It's permitted in more areas, one because usage, the use regulations around an accessory. Short term rental requires that the owner be living on site, there's a lot more requirements that. Make it so that it is not trying to avoid some of the uses that we know and of concern, so. I'm happy to bring out some of the use regulations around both. All the accessory uses that I did just want to.
Okay. And you, you understand that what she, what she's saying there is correct, what she's saying is where it's a principal use, so if I buy a home. In a downtown, in the, you know, wooded residential area, I can't just use that for a Airbnb. When you're talking about accessory usage, she's talking about somebody that lives in that particular residential or that particular home. And then uses it as an accessory usage, like a home occupation almost would be like a small, you know. You know, a lawyer hanging out a shingle or an engineer doing the same thing, this would be functionally that person using it while living there. She, so that's why there's, it's a permitted uses accessory is what she's saying, am I correct in my interpretation, Hana?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, this is why that is not allowed in any relatively residential area.
Correct.
It's only permitted use unless it starts to get more away from the residential area.
Correct.
Yes. That, and then would also relate to someone should rent out a room.
Yeah. So, everybody understands it, so. Okay. Just state your name and your address for the record.
Sure, Matt, Matt Spamber. I was just going to say what she was saying, clarify that. accessory going in. I put in by property.
That's the, that is the distinction that was just made.
Correct, yeah, that's right. So only if you live there, you get.
Well, again, it was brought to our attention and we'll look at it before a final vote on the ordinance, so there may be some changes.
Sorry, resident. Derek Bier, seven twenty six.
What was your last name again, Dan?
Koby.
Can you spell that for us?
K O B Y R A.
Thank you.
It's also on the list. So currently I'm in conservation residential. But. I currently can part my RV in the back of my property and I currently have the business to build a swimming pool if I so choose. Conservation is primary residential, both of those are typical residential activities and uses of a home. Why was the decision made to eliminate? Like what's the government interest in taking that?
Well, I mean, are we talking about the construction? There are two separate issues, the parking of the RV is still permitted, just not as close to the line, if I understand correctly.
No, it's blank here, which according to this document listed as.
I, so I might have you confused with somebody else who was asking about an RV, I thought so.
I asked this question two and a half months ago when we had the Q and A and it was. So it was a valid question, so I assume we have an answer.
So the parking of an RV is not permitted in that area.
Correct, it is now, it is not in the new.
Okay.
So the parking would be on your property, right?
Correct, I have five acres in the back, only consider. Start summer.
All right.
As well as swimming pool, which I currently don't have, but I could build if I wanted to now.
Well, with, so and the, the answer to that one is actually more simple than the RV, the answer to that one is. The borough made the decision or it's been looked at that, you know, in this area, that's not what is wanted in the future, that said, you could always apply for a variance to try to get that and. Make it, make that argument to the zoning board.
Looking at the area roughly ten to twenty percent.
And, and that's what. Yeah, exactly, and that is an argument you make as one of the five factors to the zoning board, but yeah, but in the, and the problem is you with, with a change this size. You're not going to be able to get everything perfect, the RV question is more interesting, is that, Hana, based on your inter, like, I. And I, like I said, I didn't look at this one specific question, is that correct for him that there would not be a permitted RV space parking, RV parking? That doesn't seem. I mean, I, I, that's the question, like, parking an RV is different than using, like, living in the RV.
Right, right, the design is like an RV lot, right, isn't that where that conversation was, like, you want to put ten campers back there and have a campground.
That's not permitted.
There's, there's ambiguity in that, it, it lends to the question of if this gets an active day, I go out in the spring, take my RV out for camping trip with the family. I come back, I'm now moved it, which would. Followed in.
Right.
Am I now a violation?
Well, and I think the intent, well, I think the intent, at least my understanding was when we looked at this, was that the RV. As long as it's not static, like this is an actual, you're using it as a, you know, you're taking it off site, like, you're not living in an RV.
Yes.
So.
But which would make it, which would be the accessory use of the RV?
Correct, that, that would be the, yeah.
State of this parking.
Well.
I don't, there's these.
I think, I think, yeah, okay, I mean, I think that's something we would actually want to take a look at, just make sure the language is correct.
Let's make sure that's clear, right, yeah. The intention is that you're going to be able to park your RV in your backyard.
But not.
You just can't be camping all the time in your backyard.
Right, that's, because I mean, and that's a problem, and that is a problem we actually deal with in some municipalities where people just decide to move into an RV. Okay, fair enough, but the, the swimming pool issue is a little hard, is unfortunately, yes, that is being restricted in this zone and. You would then require a variance to get that.
Is there a reason?
I, I, I think the intent is because it's so, like I said, it's only ten to twenty percent of the people, they just have made the decision that that's not what's wanted in that zone.
Okay. Was it not?
That does not include hot tubs, that is a separate issue.
Okay, let's spell that.
Chad, did you?
I, I would agree with that, when it looks like. Bring his boat back from the lake and park it on his property. Says boat and RV.
Yeah, I see it says parking RV and boat in the accessory uses table, let me take a look at the actual ordinance, because I don't think it's. I, I know that's not the intent. Because I think it, I think they're talking about using it accessory usage in terms of, did you have something, Hana?
I was ready. Is in regard to storage, so. I, I, I would say there is a feeling that we should reassess for storage in the conservation residential district. Because. That is how it's the accessory uses current.
Good.
So I, I would ask that too, because I know. At times my nearest put RV in here in the conservation area and it was parking it for a few days, so we moved it and so forth. And I think that would be in the same situation that it's that. And even, I don't know to vote, but if I wanted to vote for. I wouldn't be able to.
So is that something you guys would like us to actually change to allow in certain districts? Because it's, it's a simple modification in the table of usage.
I will even question, question on this one, varies however. And what's that, I'm in the conservation district, but we promise something.
Well, and like I said, this is, this is a question for council, if that change is something you feel is appropriate, it can be done.
And we're, we're allowed to form a consensus in the public hearing here with that.
No, you can discuss it here and, and suggest those changes and then before, remember, you haven't voted on this yet, that's literally the entire purpose of the public hearing. You guys are out and open, this is no sunshine issue, you could discuss it, and if you guys come to a consensus, those changes can be made. Hana, they can be, I mean, this is one that can be updated relatively easily.
Counselor, I'd like your opinion either way on those things. Making the, I haven't read and asked the right. About the parking of the RV and boat. We're, we're not living.
Right, but we're talking about accessory uses, the, the swimming pool, like I said, is a more cut and dry issue, and that's one that. The, the answer, and that, this one was actually discussed in the planning commission several times while I was there. And the answer was, you, you won't be able to please everybody, we're trying to create, you know, these new districts that have that, so there's always going to be that potential. If somebody's going to expect something and then there'll be a change, so.
If, if I can recall, I mean, I, I wasn't a huge part of that discussion, but my understanding was they, they were trying to preserve as much green space as possible. In those areas, so they were looking at not allowing additional things to be built back there is what they were trying to accomplish, am I correct when I say that?
You, you, yes, and you were more, and you were more privy to the early discussions than I was, I, I came into this and later in the review process.
That, is that how, I mean, you, you gentlemen and Mr. McManaman were part of most of those discussions with those committees, is that, is that how you recall those conversations? Okay, all right.
Mr. McManaman, you have an opinion on, on the RVs and swimming pool and roads?
I, I also agree that variance was more important than parking.
Counselor, woman Bongler?
Yeah, I agree that we should care about parking situation, which is. You know, your own incidents and. Full variation.
Counselor, you said, clarify, is that?
Oh, I'm in favor of being the first to.
Counselor, I concur on which one. To what, Counselor and Bongler, you said, for the RV and. Back to there.
And, uh, Mr. President, do you want, I'm sorry, you want to answer this, okay.
I won't forget him, he forgets us, but no, I won't forget him, Counselor Leavenberg.
So I'm having trouble hearing some of the discussion because it's distorted, I can hear. Jason perfectly, Shane, I can hear you good, John, I didn't hear you, Chad, I could hear you. Terry, I could hear you, Shanna, you were a little faded and so was Roy and sometimes from the podium, so if you could just repeat. What we're discussing, I understand it has to do with RVs and boats, I got.
Counselor Leavenberg, I think, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, all of the councils so far that have spoken. Has said they're for allowing and permitting use for the parking of the RV and boat. In the conservation area and everybody except one person, I believe, wanted to do the variance for the pool. Then you have to get a variance to do the pool in the conservation area, am I correct, Chad, you said they should be able to do a pool also?
I, I think would assume that. Be covered in impervious structure or.
Well, it would be, it would be part of the impervious coverage of the lot, so it would be in that calculation.
So I think that, you know, most of that. Lots are, are bigger, smaller lots, probably wouldn't, but relying on five acres. I would imagine that should be something you should do, I mean, have a half an acre lot, house and stuff like that, chances are you're not going to be able to. Yes, anyway, you're not going to be able to put up. So I think that with the larger. Should put in.
But in order, in order to get that, would they always have to do a variance or not?
In this case, the way it's written, they would need a variance. Yes, it is not a, it's not permitted.
So my question. So my question is. When you go for a variance. How, how much money does that cost somebody to do that, is it, or is it free?
Fifteen hundred is it? Thousand?
So residential, I think it's a thousand, I think.
I can't, I can't remember what, yeah, it's, it's a thousand, it's eight hundred to a thousand.
So if somebody wanted to put a pool and they have to get a variance, put it eight hundred to a thousand dollars and, and it could still get denied?
That is correct, yes. As written, that is correct.
Yeah, hold on, let, just like you'll, I've had a chance to answer, go ahead, Brian, keep talking.
So I mean, I'm kind of in Chad's ballpark, but. You know, I don't know how many people this actually affects.
But, Mr. Leavenberg, you want, are you okay with the RV and boat parking and that should be allowed?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we're all there because I'm there too, so the RV and boat.
The RV one, so the RV and boat one is going to be reviewed.
Counselor Leavenberg, keep going on the swimming pool.
I, I don't know how many people it affects, I mean, how many can actually put a swimming pool in, but I, I have a hard time. Believing that this gentleman has five acres and then he has to pay a thousand dollars to, to get a variance to put a swimming pool in. That's the problem I have, but. I don't think you should have to pay that money to get a variance, but I know you can't. Cover every situation, but at the same time, I don't think we should put hoops and hurdles up for somebody that has five acres and can put a swimming pool in easily. So I don't know how to handle that, that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't know how to handle that.
And your challenge in a community like this is, if he has five acres in the borough, he probably has the biggest lot in the borough at this point, that's, that's residential. So, you know, most of those properties are probably less than an acre. Uh, in, 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 in most cases, I would, I would think.
And that's correct, in this, in this district, correct, Hana?
Counselor, Counselor Man, I was just going to say that, because I live in a conservation area and. Brad, you've seen my backyard, I can bowl really in there unless it was, you know, a waiting pool in that, most of the. Area, if you had the map in front of you, you could see the color, it's, it's in the smaller areas, like you see the point of the. Yeah, those fees are a bit challenging for, for residents there, does make me ponder. Shane, would, would they still though? Would a person trying to put pools, don't they have to go through something else prior to that?
Well, well, they have to go through all the processes to go to the pool, the reason why it costs so much money is because we still lose like three hundred dollars even charging a thousand because of. All the expenses that are involved with it, so, you know, we pass on the majority of costs, which is still, you know, as Mr. Leavenberg said, it's, it's a lot of money. So. You know, the, the question really comes down to, do you want to allow swimming pools in a conservation district or not? That's, and, and so I explained to you what I interpreted as their reasoning. Uh, for not allowing them, you, your decision really comes down to. Should you allow them in that district or, or not, that's, that's really what it is.
And with, with the newer information, I agree with Mr. Bailey and Mr. Leavenberg.
Can I, can I ask one more question, i- is there a difference between above ground and an in-ground pool for in this situation?
Uh, no, no, I don't think so.
Not pools or pool, it simply says pools, not permitted.
So pool would be anything.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's federal law, yeah, that's federal law. Because it also, I mean, understand that, that you're not just putting a swimming pool in, now you have to put a certain amount of fencing in. And, and all sorts of other things that are required to put in with, with a swimming pool, so it's not just throw a pool in the backyard and start playing.
I understand each pool has to be protected by any, you know, small child that could fall in, uh, my next question is. Oh, I just went blank. Oh, I just went blank. Hmm. Uh. Hey, I'll go ahead. I'll think of it.
We'll come, we'll come back. So based on what we. What we heard there, now sounds like Councilman Dyke. Does not want them to do, does not want our residents to vary extra swimming pool in the conservation area for that. You don't want them to have to get a variance, want to be permitted use.
Correct, correct. If as long as the impervious, so I think the impervious. Coverage is gonna be here. Fail safe there. Couldn't build it.
Is he correct? So then that is, he is correct in the sense that. If the if the impervi- it counts as impervious coverage because it's going to be cement or some, so it's not going to be permeable surface. Therefore, at a certain point, if they put in too big of a pool, it would exceed the impervious.
So even those permitted use because it would not that. That that um. Restriction or. It would not be allowed at that.
It it would be impermissible under the zoning ordinance because it would not be allowed.
Also with Mr. Dyke. This uh, Councilman Anders, you hear the same. Councilwoman Bomgar.
I agree.
Councilwoman. Hammond. House of Art.
I understand where I was.
Hey, Councilman. Councilman Leyenberg.
Uh, what is the question? I'm sorry, it got distorted a little.
And so. So because you can't, even if it's permitted use. Which if you change it to permitted use, you just can't build a swimming pool there. You have to pass another test. On the property. So you're not going to be able to cram a swimming pool. Into a smaller. Property there, but if somebody has four acres. Or less even, they may be able to build a swimming pool in there. So it's not just I want to build a swimming pool in ten. There's some other tests to pass. So with that, most council members have said. They want it as a permitted use, so they don't have to get a variance and spend that type of money.
Okay, they're saying. They may have, they may have a property, but they're not, they don't have a the proper size to have that.
Correct, because the answer would be when they put in a pool that's too, if you put in a a giant pool, it would exceed the impervious coverage.
Okay, I support that.
Particularly on a one acre lot or a half acre lot. Whereas uh, the other, the other side of the argument is it's simply not permissible. That was the intent and now we are simply. You know, if somebody wishes to do that, then they simply file for a variance with the zone here.
Yes, I would support that and I thought I would, I was gonna ask before. Um. And I assume I know the answer, but. You know, everybody in this borough, when this is passed, nobody's grandfathered in and everybody's bound by the new zoning ordinance. You you can't say, oh, you know, I'm grandfathered in unless I guess you started the process, all right?
No, no. The every, everybody's grand, anything that exists already is grandfathered. That's it would be an existing non-conforming use.
I think what he's trying to say is if they tried to do something new. They can't coin being grandfathered. Everything that's there is there. Yeah, yeah, everything that's there is already there.
So anybody.
Shane, you. Shane, you got me. That's that's what I was saying.
Okay, I I was looking at it the inverse of like, no, 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 but it's the.
So from what I hear, six to one in favor of of making it a permissible. Permissible use for the swimming pool. Obviously provided they pass. They pass the other.
Issue with the impervious coverage. Hana, can you, can you prepare a proposed change for that? Thank you. And the RV issue.
I don't remember what that gentleman's in with, but I think he wanted to say something else and then Councilman Leyenberg was talking.
I don't know if that matters because it looks like we're doing the changes.
We've had both of those.
He doesn't ask what they answered the question. There are eleven properties. So that variance would.
Well, I mean, in the end, it looks like council is asking for a modification any.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Come up to the podium. State your name and your address.
Nine hundred seventy. On the question of pool, we have one now that for thirty years. I don't think it was conservation when we moved there. And that's on conservation. I don't think it's ever gonna happen. Pool's thirty years old, but if we would want.
I'm just smiling, sir, because I have a thirty year old pool too.
They don't last that long. I don't think it's gonna happen, but would we be able to replace that?
So the answer is yes, you can replace a prior non-conforming existing use as long as it fits within the definitions of the prior non-conforming. That's.
Anything it would be smaller, because my intention would be.
That is permissible. That is permissible. All zoning ordinances have that. That is, it's designed that way because in the end, if you were to take it out, and I believe it's they have a year to replace it, I think, and the new one, I think it's a year. So you would have a year to replace it and if you didn't, then that use would be considered abandoned. Okay.
I don't know who did it, but they did a nice job in. On all. Whoever was involved, it's nice.
Shane did it himself. He personally.
Why it took so long?
Do you, okay, are there any other questions uh with respect to uh the zoning ordinance as we've gone through? After the train's done. Alright. Hana, you want to continue on?
All right, to share those the slides again, just so I can. Understand. I think we'll we'll move on to the saldo now.
Yep.
So the saldo update, um, so what we have in in these were slides that were shared during the public information day. Um, since two thousand and four, it's what's today. The saldo update, this is just a summary and captures what we heard as we were beginning this process. So. It is not an exhaustive list. It's not all encompassing, but some of the big pieces we heard was. In um, ensuring strengthening sidewalk requirements, um, providing a clear and standardized development review process. Storm management regulations enforcement. Reviewing um and making consistent street design guidelines, consistency in aesthetics. Um, having development standards that allow for both on preservation of historic integrity. Um, but also contemporary practices in architecture and design. Um, consistent walkable development and connectivity and accessibility of streetscape. So these were the priorities we understood or some summary of them. So the table of contents, I think. You can see we went again from a eleven-part saldo to a six-part saldo with the appendix. This was, as was the zoning ordinance, a complete rewrite. So. The major changes as we go into the next slide. Or I'm so sorry. I am. The major changes are really about um bringing it into. Current best practices, current codes. The saldo had not been updated for quite some time and there were some. Conflicting regulations, um, some inconsistencies, particularly as related to the zoning ordinance. So we wanted to ensure that we were bringing these up to. Best practices and where they are today. Um, I think the street, the streetscape, some of the connectivity pieces. Um, some of the development requirements, all of these were really. Systematically overhauled and brought um. To comply with best practices. I'll pause. Questions?
Okay, so she, she went through the saldo section. Did anybody from the public have any? Comments or questions on that? Okay, does anyone online have any besides Councilman Leyenberg, any from the public online have any? Comments on saldo? Okay, does any council member have anything on saldo?
Okay.
Or a woman, pardon me?
So uh, Mr. President, if that's the case, then I would ask that you uh, we open the floor up to allow for comments. And uh.
Oh, we have the official map yet.
Oh, we. We did have them. Oh, no, we didn't actually have the, we had the map up. We didn't actually.
Yeah. We have the official map.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I know, I'm fired.
So the official map, so just to be clear, the borough has, this is a new ordinance. The ordinance that will be adopted in the next official map. Official map itself is a. New um. You. Sorry, a new uh. Entity for the borough, a new uh. Uh, map that will be adopted. And what the official map. Does bring forward is it shows both existing. Public lands and existing um. Key features of the borough. It also is intended to be allow the borough to prioritize future public improvements. So the way the borough. Um, worked with us to identify what these would be was very strongly and closely aligned with boroughs that we have. Adopted about a year, about a year and a half ago, the borough's green waste trails, open space plan, which have. Has very detailed maps around connectivity in the borough, both pedestrians, bikes. Um, and trails within the borough and with the larger region. So the proposed official map. Will show um terms of connectivity, multimodal improvements, proposed trails. It also speaks to some of the. Borough-owned infrastructure, such as a municipal parking lot, future parks. Recreation areas as well as future wells for the municipal water system.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Clark with regards to the official map? Alright, anybody from council?
Sir, listen, can you explain the process uh? Your councils would. Possibly identify a new space to add to this map?
So what would happen is if there's. As because this is being adopted by ordinance, there would need to be an ordinance change to might make a modification to this map as well. So it would be the same process. It would mean going through planning, zoning, county planning. And then back here for an approval after that. So it's not a simple process to make these types of map changes.
But it, but it's meant to do that.
Yeah, well, and that's the point. It's it's no different than uh, like, consider like a rezoning that you would do for for a zoning district. You would have to go through through those exact changes as well, and we would have to give notice to our neighbors as well because of our. It our work with the comprehensive plan.
Sure, now we're ready for the public comment here.
Yeah, uh, so at this point now, sorry. At this point uh. We would do public comment on uh the zoning, the saldo and the map. And uh, that will be limited to five minutes per person, but uh. By all means, please uh. Now is the time.
So if you're going to speak, come up to this, to the podium, state your name and your address again, and you will have five minutes. To present your. Items. Anybody from the public? Yep, there's a public comment. Five minutes, we're gonna limit people to, you have five minutes, state your name and address again.
Dan Cadre again, seven twenty-six Park Street. Uh, sorry, you guys actually answered the majority of what I have. Um. On it, just. All in all, I'm actually pretty happy with, you know, changing the zoning, modifying it, things like that. But one thing that kind of stood out to me on the agricultural issues. Is it only. Uh. It only states them as full per person, so hobby farms are not included. The agriculture. Want to feed your own family. You don't get any exceptions to have accessory buildings that can. Support. Uh, but that is. The other interesting one is, and I would love an actual answer to this. But it. But in the zoning code. For livestock and pets. Can someone explain why two horses only require two acres? But thirteen chickens require seven acres. To have in the borough. What is the scientific basis on why that?
So I'm gonna give you an honest answer, Ms. Clark. Can you answer that one? Because that clearly was not something we personally calculated because I do not know the amount of chickens per acre.
Chickens need about.
I grew up in Rattings, so we didn't have chickens.
I grew up in Canada.
So. Well, but uh, to answer your your first question first about the uh, the the hobby farms, the the answer is. Your your circumstance is unique. Like tha- that's not something that is, that was not something that they were, that was considered in this particular thing. Gardens are permitted, but that stuff, that's clearly a permitted thing. You're talking about farming for yourself. That's not something that would be. I I mean, it's not something that's so popular that it would have been considered. Usage per se. So a variance, that's specifically what a variance is for. Like, it's something unique, the circumstances, it's. It's different than what you would be asking. So you would be asking for something. Different, like beyond what would be in the zoning.
Would I be asking for a variance at a thousand dollars every year?
Well, no, a variance, so a variance runs with the land. Like, once you obtain it. It's there. It would stick with it unless the usage is abandoned. So if you stop raising chickens, then it would disappear, then it would disappear.
Can I bundle all of these variances and store the hobby farm into one?
Yes.
Or am I going to be showing?
No, you would, yeah, so when you, well, I'm not your attorney. But if I was your attorney. I would do it all in one application. If I was your attorney, but I'm not.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, and then the other one is just production of outbuildings in conservation drop from two and a half stories to twenty. He at the uh. Pitch of the roof. That puts some issues and limitations on actually how high the variance are depending on what your pitch is. I haven't looked at the codes locally here. No, I need a three twelve, a two twelve, a six twelve. On it, but that would change that height, which was what I asked about two months ago in terms of if I. And which the RV is now kind of solved, but if I want to throw the whole bar and put my RV in, I need a.
And that is exactly one of those reasons that are very, that is, so that is very specific to you. So that would be a variance that you would request while doing all the variance.
Yeah, I. I guess my comment on that, it seems like you have a lot of variances that you have to comment and pitch based on. But the majority of that district. Is small, under a half acre lots. Um, I did the math on it, a hundred and quarter of the lots don't actually meet the requirement. So you're really regulating a lot. With this. Um, there's like thirty-two that are between half acre and two acres. So, I mean.
And I mean, I I think in a way you've answered your own question. You're doing something. That is not.
Yeah, but I guess why is the code written for that district in that way? Because most of, even with how it's written, most of those properties give to anybody. And I mean, the town. But it's just, it seems like you're pushing a lot of costs on very few people. And I haven't really figured out the reason other than other people want to look at my property, so.
I can speak as one borough council person. There have been cases where in my opinion, residents have come forward with cases that. You wanted to really cram something in there. Yeah, you could really kind of do it. If it was just a permitted use, they could go ahead and do it.
Exactly.
If you wanted to really cram things in, I've seen some things. You have a big problem, so.
I I would, yeah, I understand my situation. I, I feel like there has to be a better. Government interest than other people.
Well, I.
Which is really what it boils down to.
Yeah, I think that's a philosophical difference that that. You're gonna have.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for all your comments. So thank you for trying to do this hearing again. And you can ask your uh. Your opinions and your comments.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Any other comments from? Any of the other public?
Any other comments from council?
Anybody online from the public? Council? Okay.
So if that's the case, then this public hearing with respect to the proposals of the zoning ordinance, the zoning map and the proposed saldo have, is going to be closed. And we will commence with our regular order of business.
Close at seven oh eight.
So the seven oh eight close, how about we just give everybody a minute or two? If they want to leave, they can leave. You're obviously more than welcome to stay.
Um, ju- just so you're aware, um. I don't know if you want to make the announcement or not, but we don't intend on doing a first reading of the ordinance tonight. They're going to do a first reading of the ordinance. On November twentieth. I I think there's a number of, a number of things.
Because there's a couple of little change, yeah, we're gonna make some changes, obviously, based on what we heard here tonight. So that will, before it's being voted on, everybody will have a chance to see it and they'll be able to come to the next meeting and actually put in their final input. Okay?
So we don't expect any action from our council on this, just any of these three specific issues here, so. At this point, if you want to leave, you can, or you can stay for our council.
They're all gonna leave.
That's why we said we'll give them a couple of minutes. We know how this works.
Exactly.
Thank you all for coming. It's nice to see participation.
Oh, yeah, you know, you.
We're gonna call our borough council meeting on the order at seven, ten. Uh, PM, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Wait, I'll be. To the flag of the United States.
It's America and to the republic where we just stand.
One nation, under God.
This will. Indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Liberty, justice, for all.
Alright, so for the, for the record again, all the council is present, Councilman Wavenburg is. Uh online here on Zoom, and then we do have to take a um. Break at seven thirty for an executive session as regarding litigation. There may be some action after the executive session, but I doubt we'll get through. The whole council meeting before seven thirty, so we do have to take a break at executive session, you'll have to step out of the room. So that we can have um private discussions about a litigation issue um that we have. So we'll start the meeting here with personal appeals, does anyone in the public have a personal appeal? Say your name and address. And say your appeal.
Hi, guys. I'm Mark Prada, I live at two thirteen McConge Avenue, here in Emeas. My reasons for coming here, and I'm actually kind of working with several of my neighbors on this. And it looked a bit awkward about two minutes ago, but my reason for coming here is to ask if there's some way that we can start to reel in some of. Investors in Emeas. So, you know, I know everybody's gonna say, well, no, there's no way you can say, no, you can't buy any of the properties. But here's a reason why this is turning up, and those who don't know that I walk about five to seven miles through, so. But what I'm starting to see is some deterioration related to this, so. One of the biggest things has to do with parking of cars, so that while you're not. While you're supposed to have a required number of parking spaces, they're taking their garages and not letting the people. Houses use these garages, pushing them out on the street, so the street was their entitlement. And keep seeing more and more of this in more and more neighborhoods, and other things that. That I've kind of noticed is there's sort of a burden on the borough, so the, some of the. Some of the investors do a lot of rentals to section eight tenants, I'm not opposed to section eight tenants at all, section eight is low income housing. Not opposed to that at all, what I, oh, my question here is. You know, they put more of a burden on the borough because there's more people, more houses with more cars. So we walk through the neighborhoods and see dozens of trash cans outside of their house when the average homeowner has. One or two trash cans out, and these are just examples of things that I'm seeing. So having thrown out those couple of examples, the thing that brought me here today. Is that one of the investors bought a property that. This property's gone down three times today.
Right on McConge Avenue.
No, it, so one twenty-five McConge Avenue, it's corner of Ridge and McConge Avenue. So he bought this several years ago, a large group of us came to zoning. To work on how this property was gonna be subdivided, because he initially wanted to put a row of three houses that didn't match the neighborhood at all. On this lot, and so fortunately, in the end, they subdivided it with the. Agreement that he could put a single home there, and the design was very specific. But now, on two occasions in the last two weeks, he told one of my neighbors he's planning a trailer. So here's a couple of things about this, so you know, going and looking at tables on the borough. Um ordinances, the current borough ordinance, after the borough ordinance. Bubble homes manufactured on, it's synonymous with each other, but there is no exclusion for any zoned area for a trailer. So I think he can do it, and the only thing I'm hoping is that he can't because of what we went through with the zoning variance. But back to why I'm asking if there's a way to reel in some of these landlords is, is, you know. He doesn't live in Emeas, he doesn't care about Emeas, this whole thing is just free profit for him. And this is not to Emeas either, so I can send you several articles if you wanted to see it.
So, but just to let you know, the borough is aware of this, and it's being reviewed. Yeah, so I, I'll be upfront, honestly, I share the same concern, I used to manage a community where there were five hundred thousand dollar houses. And a trailer slammed right smack in between them, and it wasn't on one street, it was over and over and over and over throughout the town. And it brought down values, and it, and and again, I mean, the same concerns that you're sharing are the same concerns that I voiced to our solicitor about this. Um there are some legal.
Issues.
Issues that we have to navigate, because there are certain rights that. We can't necessarily stop people from having, right, and so that's, that's for somebody that has more skill and knowledge than me. I can only voice the same concern that you have, and and I would voice at the council too, that 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 is a significant concern of mine. I've I've lived that, I manage that, and when you say borough services. The percentage of time that we spent, you know, in our, my former community dealing with that with borough services was. Far superior to other parts of town.
Yeah, so let me just, only because I spent the time reading this, and because my neighbors put this together, let me just read this couple of bullet points. Things that other camps have been doing, um the same thing, and only throwing it out there because.
Well, I, I mean, in fairness, I'm pretty aware of this.
Okay, one second, so his his five minutes are up, does anyone in council want to extend his time?
I'll only tell you five minutes.
Okay, do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, so, so motion.
Motion, does anyone want to make a motion to extend his time?
I'll make that.
Motion by Councilman Andrews, second by Councilwoman McManaman. Any comments, questions, all those in favor say aye. All those say no.
You have your minutes.
Thank you so much, I'll let you take.
Oh, you're okay, we just want to follow our procedures.
That's alright, thank you. So some of the things that we came up with on this list were like amortaging me on using single-family homes as rental properties. Charge of tax when I street park, he's not offered to tenants, make it less convenient to park on this street. Even requiring people to move their cars for street cleaning, you know this happens on Chestnut Street, but you know. If you've ever walked up Fifth Street or Sixth Street, but then by where the sidewalk and the street make, still do, because no. Um charge a commercial rate for refuse collection for investors, charge tax on the income being collected. Develop a rent control program to keep the rents in check and hopefully make buying only in Emeas less profitable. As one investor I'm talking about actually exclusively rents in Emeas, provides in Emeas. Um find a way to incentivize flips and de-incentivize rentals, can transfer taxes for investors be different than for owner occupied homes? No zoning variances for non-owner occupied houses. And or no rentals until a spec- a specified time after the home is purchased, I believe that was Charlottesville, Virginia. That they have done a several month thing, or I'm sure it's well, but anyway, I have articles on all of this.
So so I'd be more than happy to take whatever you want to give to us and and put it on the record.
I'll email it to you.
That, that'll be fine.
Alright, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public have any public comments? Anybody from the public online have any public comments? Feels okay, so hearing none, we'll move on to community minutes, does any council member have a community minute? Okay, hearing none, we have no special presentations tonight, we'll move to the reading of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October sixteen, we got twenty-three minutes? A motion by Councilwoman Baumgartner, second by Councilwoman McManaman, any comments, questions, or proposed changes? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. We have no decisions on bids tonight. Now we go to communications here, we have um. Six uh commendation letters, commendation letters for uh some police officers. I'm not gonna read the whole letter here, but we have one letter, uh commendation for Sergeant Schmidt. For merit for an event that happened on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three on Spruce Street in Emeas. We have a commendation letter for bravery for Sergeant Schilling for an event that happened, I think that date's right, December fifth, two thousand twenty-one at Community Park. We have a commendation letter for Mayor for Patrolman Sacks for an event that happened on March ninth, two thousand twenty-three on Chestnut Street. We have a commendation letter for Mayor for Patrolman Klein for an event that happened on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three on Spruce Street. We have another commendation letter for heroism for Patrolman Klein that happened on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three on Cold Street Circle. We have a commendation for heroism for Sergeant Alberger on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three on Spruce Street. And that is, that that is all the commendation letters for our police officers, and just like to thank all them for everything they do. Uh for our community here, anybody else have any, anyone had there? Alright, next communication, we have Quanis Club donation um letter, the Quanis Club is going to donate twenty-eight hundred dollars to the borough. Um to fix the bridge between uh Quanis Field and New Williams Street. Uh baseball field there, so thank you very much to the Quanis Club for their generous, generous donation. The next one is the police pension um COLA request, cost of living adjustment. So it's from William Kennedy requesting COLA adjustments for all eligible retired officers. Of the Emeas Police Department for twenty twenty-four, the last COLA was issued in two thousand nine, given the current economic conditions. A COLA is needed to attempt to keep up with the increased cost of goods and services, thank you for consideration in this matter. We get this letter um every year, is anyone who want to recommend this letter to move to any committee?
Recommend it, move to budget, I ask you.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions?
I have a question, uh Chris, Shane, does, does that go to the pension board at all, or is this handled before it goes there?
Well, so that's up to you guys, uh la- so last year, I I went back and looked at last year's record, you. You actually denied the request without sending it to committee uh the year before, I think the pension board actually reviewed it. Um so I I think it's it's totally up to your discretion as to where it gets handled. Um it hasn't been consistent, I'll I'll tell you that, uh last year, I know though, you you flat out voted uh when you, you got it in communications.
Okay, so we have, we have motion and a second, any other questions or comments in council? Alright, so do we want to move this forward to council? So I'm asking, there's a motion on there and a second, so all those in favor say aye.
This is the second.
That was what the motion was, just to send it there, not make any official decision here tonight, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, passes seven zero to send a budget and a finance for further discussion. Then we have a letter of resignation from Kyle Christman from Public Works. Um his last day will be Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, we do not have to vote to accept this, it's.
Correct.
There are, does anybody else in council have any communications that they'd like to share? Okay, Borough Engineers Report, there's no Borough Engineer here tonight, Solicitors Report.
Uh no report, uh most of my items are either in executive session or we discussed previously, so progress.
Thank you. Okay, we have unfinished business part one, we have ordinance twelve forty-nine. An ordinance of the Borough of Emeas, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter fifteen subsection six oh two dot three dot A. Of the Emeas Borough Code, adding residential disabled parking sign and assigned permanent parking space in a public street. Located at six eleven Wallman Street and removing residential disabled parking sign on a public street located at six thirteen. Wallman Street within the Borough of Emeas, we did have our first reading on October second, two thousand twenty-three. And this is our uh second reading, so this is a roll call vote, correct? So go around, a motion to approve first. Councilman Hart, second, Councilwoman McManaman, any comments or questions? Roll call vote, Councilwoman McManaman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Baumgartner.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wavenburg.
Aye.
Councilman Bait.
Aye.
Councilman Hart.
Aye.
Councilman DeFrain, aye, passes seven zero. Next, we have ordinance twelve fifty, an ordinance at the Borough of Emeas, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania. Amending chapter fifteen subsection six oh two dot three dot A of the Emeas Borough Code. Signing permanent parking space on a public street located in front of the address located at five fifty-five Broad Street. Within the Borough of Emeas, first reading was October second, twenty twenty-three, and this is the second reading, is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Councilman Hart, second. Second by Councilman Bait, any comments or questions? Roll call vote again, Councilwoman McManaman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Baumgartner.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wavenburg.
Aye.
Councilman Bait.
Aye.
Councilman Hart.
Aye.
Councilman DeFrain, aye, passes seven zero. New business tonight, as we stated earlier, we're going to table, it's all get through table, ordinance twelve fifty-two, twelve fifty-three.
No, but there doesn't need to be a motion on this.
No.
Right, just. Yeah, I mean, I I would actually suggest you just make a one omnibus motion to table the ordinance twelve fifty-two, twelve fifty-three.
And twelve fifty.
And twelve fifty-three.
Does any, so you have a motion by Mister, by Councilman Hart, is there a second, Councilwoman Baumgartner, comments or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those say no. Passes seven zero. We have no unfinished business part two, does anybody have an item not on the agenda?
Uh she's not on yet, though, or yeah, we're we're watching for it.
Thank you for reminding me, anybody else have any items not on agenda? Next, we have Mayor's Report.
Thank you, in your iPads this evening, you had my report, my last quarterly report, next month you'll get my end of year report. Also, um if anyone is interested in attending the Citizens Police Academy, the applications are available. Pick one up at the Police Department, it's an eight-week course and it starts in February, other than that, progress.
Thank you. Next, we have committee reports, uh first up is Public Works, Chairman Andrews.
Uh thank you, Mr. DeFrain, uh I have nothing for official action this evening, we did meet on. October eighteenth, and our meeting notes are in your iPads. Uh one note that I did want to express is that we are hiring for two full-time positions, um and they can be. Uh have their resumes since the borough, and with that, I will report progress, our next meeting is November fifteenth. And I'll report progress, sorry.
Thank you. Uh next, we have Health, Sanitation and Codes, Chairman Bait.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, uh tonight, everything for official actions. Able to for next meeting, uh next meeting. Our next committee meeting.
Thank you, next we have Parks and Recreation, Chairwoman Baumgartner.
I have one item for official action, the Borough Logo. The effort by the committee for a good part of this year. Finally have, we finally have identified a a logo that seems to have census. And that's what we mentioned, so I just wanted to. Put forward a a motion to approve this as our Borough Logo, um for the purpose of our committee, we're. For any percentage.
Okay, we have a motion for the approval of logo, second by Councilman Andrews, any comments or questions?
Um I I will, so first of all. To the Parks and Rec Committee, thank you for all of your efforts, this has been a long journey, uh she, Ms. Ms. Baumgartner has been. Working on this for quite a while, uh and back and forth and back and forth, um so. Uh there's been a lot of thought in this process, there's been a lot of work in this process, and as she stated, uh this has been. I maybe well over, maybe over a year effort, um and so this is the final. You know, it's the final product of what they've been working on.
Ag- agree, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those signify by saying no. And passes seven zero, hello, did you just finish up your section here?
Yeah, we have no- nothing for official action, our meeting notes are there, we do have a change in painting. Our next meeting date will be Monday, November fifteenth, at four thirty-five.
Thank you, Johnson, I think.
That's fine, yeah, we're we're fine, good.
Alright, so we'll go to Public Safety, um Chairman Hart.
Uh thank you. Uh we have one item, review our considerations. Uh Public Safety, we're doing a police officer candidate, and this past week, towns. Uh recommend Tyler, uh as. Uh, attention upon the successful completion of psychological exam, physical exam, drug test, and successful completion. The Outland Town Police Academy Physical Fitness Exam and Successful Completion. Act twenty certification. Hiring shall also attention upon expiration of the release of the service. And the number of jobs that broke for us that did not get. Jackson, they have.
Have a motion?
I do.
Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman McManaman. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no? Passes seven zero.
Our quarterly reports require. Uh, art in packet discussing this next month. November second, including packet next meeting is November thirtieth.
And you can announce them in the heart. So with that, we do have an executive session to talk about some litigation. Our council meeting is not over. There may be, um, there may be some action regarding our executive session uh, on there, but until, um, we resume from executive session, we're gonna have to ask the press and anyone in the public here to exit the room, uh, until we come to where can they negotiate?
So we'll open up the conference room over here for you guys. Ann- announce the time.
We're gonna, we're gonna go into executive session at seven thirty-three.
John, I just wanna say whenever you talk, you're breaking up. John, you're breaking up whenever you talk. I, I had trouble understanding you. I don't know why. I don't know if it's the microphone or what.
Hold on a second. I think, I think it might be you just started.
So we're gonna come out of executive session at thirty-four P M. We're gonna go like that? Are we gonna go back to where we're on the agenda?
Um, I would probably do the vote now.
I would, yeah, I would, I would do. Okay, would you like to help?
I'll make a motion to.
I don't, you don't, you don't need to.
This was executive session, so you don't have to do that.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, prove to withdraw, uh, Borough class action suit.
Pre-empt.
Pre-empt.
I was, I was gonna say the opt-out provision.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? A second by, by Councilwoman Baumgartner. Any comments or questions?
I would just, I would just say that by opting out, this means that we will pursue separately from the class action suit. Is the intention of, of the vote.
Definitely.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they know? It passes seven zero. All right, I believe we're back to Gen, uh, Gen Ad, and we'll turn it over to Chairman Wavenburg.
Uh, we have no, uh, items to take, uh, action on, and our next GA meeting is November sixteenth, nine A M. And, uh, via Zoom, I guess, uh, progress.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have budget and finance. That's on the chair, the chairman of that. So we do have, we do have the bill list here. So it's resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Resolved by Borough Council to authorize a payment of the November sixth, twenty twenty-three bill list as follows. Bill list one million twenty-seven thousand sixteen thousand ninety-nine cents. Harrows number twenty-one and twenty-two, three hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Oral taxes, one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and one cent. And that's a total of one million four hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents on the sixth of November, two thousand twenty-three. Would anybody like to make a motion for that? Councilman, uh, Diet, is there a second? Councilwoman McManaman, any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no? It passes seven zero. The budget performance report's in there. Significant revenue and expenses for October are in there. Uh, and then our next meeting is for Thursday, November sixteenth at eleven A M. Uh, via Zoom. Unless there's questions, I report progress. Next, we have community relations, planning, and development, Chairwoman McManaman.
Thank you, Councilman DeFrain. Nothing for official action this evening. Meeting notes from our October, uh, meeting are in your packets. Our next meeting is Monday, November twenty-seventh at four thirty P M. First, uh, via Zoom, I report progress.
Thank you. Then we have, uh, four different boards and commissions, um, minutes in our packet there. Next up is personal appeals part two. Uh, is there anyone from the public that has a personal appeal? Okay, there does not appear to be any. Next, we have Borough Management Report.
Um, so no, nothing. You, you've had enough for tonight. I report progress.
President's business. I can do this tonight, or is that you yet?
Uh, I'll just say, uh, good luck to all the candidates tomorrow and, uh, get, everybody get out and vote.
That's all I was gonna say is get out and vote. So you covered it. So dropping it for president's business from me. Um, next, anybody wanna make a motion for adjourn? Councilman Andrews, seconded by Councilman Wavenburg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. A seven zero adjourned at eight thirty-nine P M.